Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Kettering Planning Commission for November 7th, 2022. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Miami Valley Cable Council for televising and taping tonight's meeting for rebroadcast on Channel 6 and streaming live over the Internet at mvcc.net. It will also be recorded and available for later viewing on mvcc.net. Since this meeting is both audio and videotaped to form a complete record for possible appeal to the city council and/or the courts, it is important that anyone who wishes to address the commission will need to come to the lectern to speak into the microphone and give their name and address for the record. Planning Commission is a volunteer independent body appointed by council whose mission is to hear all bodies involved and subsequently make a motion to approve, deny, continue, or recommend the application. All action by the commission can be appealed to the city council. This time, I would like to introduce the commission. Absent on my far left, with an excused absence, is Ken Lackey, our Assistant Secretary. Now on my far left is Carol Fisher, our Secretary. On my immediate left is Connie Gah, our Recording Secretary. My name is Don Shemon. I'm the current Chair. On my right is Ray Waskey, who is our Vice Chair, and on our far right is Commissioner Don Rethman. Tonight for staff, we have David Roller, City Planner, and Ryan Holmesy, City Planner. All right, at this time, I'd like to move on to the first item on our agenda for this evening, which is approval of minutes. We do have three sets of minutes to approve, and we had different people available at those different meetings, so we're going to take them one at a time instead of as a group. So we will start with an approval of the August 15th, 2022 minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Rethman?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Waskey?
Abstain.
Mr. Shemon?
Yes. Our next set of minutes was from our meeting on October 3rd, 2022. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Waskey?
Yes.
Mr. Rethman?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Abstain.
Mr. Shemon?
Yes. And our last set of minutes was from our meeting on October 17th, and do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Yes.
All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Rethman?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Waskey?
Yes.
And Mr. Shemon?
Abstain. All right, next, moving into new business, the second item on our agenda is a right-of-way dedication, 3600 Schroyer Road. It is case PC-22-021. And for staff, it will be Mr. Roller.
Thank you, Mr. Shemon. Yes, we are in receipt of a dedication record plan for some right-of-way parcels located along West Stroop Road between the intersection of Southern Boulevard and Stonebridge Road. These parcels are located on the north side of the West Stroop Right-of-Way. They are currently used as right-of-way, but they've never been properly dedicated. So our surveyors on staff have put this together as a dedication plan for these properties. We reviewed it for compliance with the City of Kettering subdivision ordinance. We found that everything has been met, and we are ready to recommend approval.
All right, any questions? Ms. Fisher? Mr. Waskey?
I have none.
Mr. Rethman?
I have none.
I have none as well. Then I guess we are ready for a staff recommendation?
We are recommending approval of the dedication plan for West Stroop Road.
All right, any final questions?
No.
All right, since this is not a public meeting, we do not need to close that. Mr. Waskey, I believe you have a motion for us.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a motion, whereas an application has been received from Thomas Robillard, Planning and Development Director for the City of Kettering, 3600 Schroyer Road, Kettering, Ohio, requesting approval of a record plan to dedicate eight tracts of land as a right-of-way, totaling 1.214 acres. And whereas this request constitutes approval of a record plan for the newly described right-of-way, and whereas the Planning Commission has reviewed the facts surrounding this request, including an oral and written report by city staff, which is incorporated herein, I move that the applicant's request for approval of a dedication plan for West Stroop Road be approved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Waskey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Rethman?
Yes.
And Mr. Shemon?
Yes. All right, next item on our agenda is a zoning code workshop, and I'm going to suggest that we kind of do this informally. I'm not going to pause and ask for individual questions, but I would say anybody on the commission, as you have a question, just speak up. And Mr. Holmesy or Mr. Roller, if you feel appropriate need to pause for questions, feel free to ask for them. Who's going to start off for you?
I can probably start.
Mr. Holmesy?
Briefly. Thank you, Chairman. This next item, we just wanted to get, continue the process. We had a meeting, I believe it was in July, where we talked about some of the code, some of the potential code amendments we were working on, and a lot of those amendments, we talked about that meeting, were based upon that study that staff had conducted over the last year and a half or so about just existing commercial properties in the city that have already been developed and whether or not they're conforming or not, and if they're non-conforming, to what degree. And based on that study, are there any changes that we felt made sense to be made to the zoning code to discuss with the Planning Commission? So a lot of those items that we discussed at that meeting are in this memo. Some of them are a little bit, there's others that we, based on the last year and a half or so of looking at permits and discussing internally some of our regulations, we, in some areas, we thought maybe some better clarification would be worth doing, some minor amendments and things of that nature, but generally, the overall goal is to make things clearer and easier to do in the city. So with that, we put a copy of the memo up there. It should be by everyone's seat, so I'll just start going through. I agree with the informal format. If anyone has any questions, just let me know, and we can just discuss. Some of these are real simple. It'll just be a real quick statement. The first one deals with, and I figure this would generate some discussion, deals with our zoning districts. Obviously, we're pretty familiar with the zoning districts that we do have, our commercial districts in particular. We go from office straight up to business. There's not really an intermediate district in there. And I know some, a lot of members of the Planning Commission have been on this board for quite a while, remember when we established a lot of EDOs back in the day. If you look at the use list and a lot of those EDOs, they're basically a hybrid between office and really light retail. There's a lot of EDOs on Wilmington and throughout the city that allow, basically, neighborhood level businesses, but don't allow things like car washes and fueling stations and auto repair and things like that, but they would allow convenience stores and stuff like that. We don't really have a district that does that in the city. You either are office, or you jump straight into business. And we do have standards for specific uses in the code in Chapter 1137. They prevent a lot of those more intense uses from opening on some of those properties, but we thought it's at least worth discussing the possibility of a neighborhood-type business district or modifying the office district to allow some light retail uses in that zoning district. But that was kind of just an idea. If anyone has any questions or comments, I can move on.
I mean, the only comment I have is, I mean, with all the talk about walkable neighborhoods and everything like that, it gives us somewhere to go if we did want to put in a local store or something where that would probably not be easily done under our current. So I like it.
And one of the things that we struggle with is that, you know, if you remember the, there's been some rezoning cases for the, it used to be Uncle Doodle Moo, and then it was, it's been sitting vacant for a while. It was Chipotle before, the property that's over on Far Hills near the intersection of Stroop. That particular location, we've, the things that we've had proposals to rezone it to business, and sometime, but the business category is pretty broad. And in those, one particular case, the most recent, they wanted to rezone that to be appropriate for fast food. And some of the neighbors said, well, it might be okay for some businesses, but not for that. We don't want that. And I believe Planning Commission agreed with the neighborhood that that was not an appropriate location for fast food, but, you know, maybe a dentist's office, or, you know, maybe a small shop, or a bank, or some of these other things might be okay. But they would never be able to go there because rezoning some of that property to business would open up everything. So this kind of, this kind of a district would help us kind of tailor that a little bit better.
Yes. I mean, it makes sense to me. I mean, whatever we can do to, you know, facilitate, you know, some of the redevelopment of, you know, some of these legacy properties that are, you know, shoehorned in and, you know, are right in the middle of, or right next to residential neighborhoods. If we can, you know, give some property owners and/or developers another avenue that is lighter touch in those neighborhoods, I'm all for that.
So, yeah, like where I've worked before, we had restaurant-type uses, but we would just not allow drive-throughs. It'd be walkable, like a use that's a little less intense. But that was an idea.
Just a quick question. I want to make sure that this is, just for clarity, we don't have any properties identified for neighborhood business currently, correct? It's just, it would be adding this to a menu of possibilities?
Yeah, it would add it to a menu. I mean, while I was doing some research on some EDOs that we have, that have been created in the past, there were some of those where you looked through the use list, and it would, a neighborhood business-type district would be probably ideal versus business or office, but there's not any strict ones identified at this time, where we would, in the way that if it's adopted, that we'd start rezoning right away. It's just a menu item.
Yep. I know I've mentioned this before, many years ago, or several years ago, I used to live in Columbia, Maryland, and much of this city is kind of built around this neighborhood business zoning concept. I don't know if they call it that, or they call it something else, but it's very similar in concept, and it works very well. And they have separate, they have other zoning districts for things like car repair shops, and they have like a whole zoning district that's just all car repair shops on one section of town. So if you want your car repaired, you got to go there, but it keeps it localized.
Columbia, Maryland?
Columbia, Maryland, yes, yeah.
We can look at that, have it written down here. Okay, the next one, and this is real general, we've talked about this a little bit in our last meeting, under our Chapter 1137 standards for specific uses, there's a lot of uses where it's, in addition to the buffer yard requirements, a six-foot-high finished masonry wall is required. I believe that's kind of a legacy standard, it's been around for a long, long time, and as technology's improved, there's other options like Simtech that are more substantial than like a standard wooden stockade fence, but they accomplish the same goal as a masonry wall. We were talking about possibly modifying some of those sections to still allow the masonry walls an option, but again, create a menu. Simtech vinyl walls are pretty thick, and they accomplish the same goal, and they're hardy, they can be maintained a little bit easier once they start to deteriorate. And going along with that, there's some uses that have their specific setback standards that we wanted to evaluate a little bit more to see if some of those, in certain scenarios, might be a little bit too strict, like places of worship. We have a 35-foot setback for all structures, even accessory structures, and we wanted to look at things like kennels and some other uses to see if there's a way to have, if it's indoors and no windows and soundproofed and things like that. We have, those standards already exist, so are those setbacks a little bit excessive? The next section, you might, when our, I don't know how the old code was written, but our current code, we have in our accessory structure section or accessory use section, we have allowance for sheds, which is basically any detached and closed structure that's 100 square feet or less. The standards are pretty lenient in terms of materials and architectural design, and then once you hit 100 or 1 square feet, the architectural requirements for bigger, like detached garages trigger and become a requirement, which in and of itself isn't a bad thing, but there's kind of a gray area between when it's still effectively a shed, it's not a one-car garage yet, and some of the standards get a little bit strict and difficult to meet. Since I've been here, one of the ones that run in, we run into a lot, if you have like 140-square-foot shed you want to put in, a lot of them have the T111 wood siding on them, which is usually, which is always vertical. I guess you can have it horizontal, but I've never seen anyone do that before. And if you have vertical siding in the gables of your house, it's okay. You just have to make sure it matches the color, but if you have horizontal siding in the gables in a brick house, you get into a situation where you have to have horizontal siding on it, and that gets very, very expensive. So, and there's other options, you want to build a brick shed or something like that, you can meet the requirement, and there's some flexible interpretations you can take of the code. We would just prefer to kind of modify that when you're in that area, 101 square feet up to like maybe 150, the standards are a little bit more flexible for those siding But that's what that, we need, we'd like to do a little more study on that to find out what the typical size of a shed is that we, or a detached structure we review to find out if there's actually a big problem that's worth fixing there.
I mean, what's the minimum size for a one-car garage? I mean, it could be up to that, because I'm thinking if somebody's got a full-size SUV, there's no way you're getting a 10 by 15. I mean, half of it's sticking out the door.
Yeah, there's.
I mean, it may not be much bigger than that, but I would suspect it might be slightly bigger than that.
Well.
I mean, I think where you're heading with the 150 is, it probably makes sense at anything less than that.
That number is flexible. That 150 number, that was kind of just a general idea, but I don't think there's really a minimum size for a one-car garage. I would think it's like 192. One of the challenges, a lot of, once you hit 200 square feet, you got to meet the building code. So there's a lot of structures that'll come in, and they'll get like 198 square feet. And the intention of this isn't necessarily to have someone putting in a one-car garage that has more lax standards, so to speak, but the people that are just building a slightly larger shed, 140 square feet, something like that. But we can look up what the minimum size for a one-car garage is, but I don't think the intention of this is to say everything below a one-car garage has simpler standards. It's more that area where it's still clearly a garden shed that might be a little bit bigger, if that makes sense.
Yep.
And this next section, this is more of an, we could probably do this with an interpretation of the current code, but our carport section, also in Chapter 1139, has the same architectural requirements as a garage, as like a garage where you have to match the architecture of the house and match the materials and match the orientation of the materials. And we have a carport, especially if you have a shorter house, it's kind of like matching the roof line becomes very difficult, and it's very expensive. So we think we can interpret today's code to say you put a trim kit on the roof line and then put a column kit around the columns, you can probably meet the requirements, but we'd like to clarify that a little bit better, mainly for some of the shorter houses in the city where needing a carport is more likely, because you might not have a detached, you might not have an attached garage at all, and you might not have a detached garage at all either. The next section, a while ago, we did have an allowance for ground-mounted solar equipment, and I know there was something that came up that made that be removed to have a requirement that you have to attach it to a roof. The challenge with that standard we have now is if you don't have a south-facing roof, it's not very economical to put solar panels on your, the roof of your house, which that wipes out a lot of properties in the City of Kettering from being economical to put solar panels on the property. So we'd like to do a little more research to have a standard that allows a ground-mounted system, as long as the ground-mounted system you put it on is like manufactured and it's designed specifically to hold solar panels. You might have some standards that come into play, certain height requirements and percentage of the area yard you can cover, but I don't think we want to discourage people from putting solar panels up. Logically, if you have a roof line that will support it, you'll put it on your roof, but if you don't, we don't want to tell you, sorry, you can't do that anymore. So we'd like to do a little more research and add an allowance for ground-mounted systems with, subject to certain standards. Mainly, the main standard that we've come up with is it needs to be manufactured to hold solar panels, not like a, you put a column up in your backyard and bolt some plywood to it, and you put your solar panel on top of that, and you're good to go. We can add something.
Well, I was just going to say, we don't, we don't want some people deciding to make homemade projects, because not everybody's idea of homemade is what everybody else thinks is good, so. And we want to, you know, number one, safety, number two, we want to make sure that it's durable and lasts long, and the third thing is aesthetics, but having something, having something that has been engineered and designed to hold the solar panels is always going to be the best choice, so.
The next section, this is actually something we talked about in detail at the last meeting that came out of that nonconformity study. In our residential pattern districts, village, neighborhood, estate, there's a setback requirement that's from between 6 and 15 feet that you have to meet, but then there's a little caveat that says if you have a smaller setback existing, that becomes the standard that you have to meet. So if you have an existing standard, if you have an existing setback that's less than the minimum requirement, that's considered conforming. We don't have that same allowance for non-residential pattern districts when it comes to suburban, suburban service, suburban business, and suburban center. And when we did that study, we found, not a lot, but there are some properties where there's a commercial property where the building, it's surrounded by commercial uses and it violates the setback. And if it's vacant for a certain amount of time or the use changes, suddenly you can't use that building anymore, or you have to demolish part of it to meet the setback. But I don't think the intention of that setback requirement is to prevent the reuse of good buildings that happen to be a few feet too close to the sidewalk line. So what this amendment would do is it would add that same allowance for, if your existing setback is less and you're next to a like use, that setback is considered legal conforming.
Yeah, quick question on that. So if that's being said, if you were demolishing the whole building, would you be allowed to put a new building at your old setback?
That's a good question. We've actually discussed that quite a bit internally about where your rights vest, and that's a gray area, because if you show intent to demolish the building and you give us your intention to redevelop the site, you probably need to meet whatever the minimum setback is in the zoning language. So I would think if you demolish it and rebuild it, you would have to meet the setback that's required under the zoning code, but that, that's our initial reaction and assumption internally. We probably, that's, we'd probably have to do some legal research on when your rights vest.
I was going to say, well, because then you come up with the, what happens if the place burns? Can you put it back as it was? Or if half of it burns? See, the reason I bring all this up is I can shake hands with my neighbors on the lot I'm on, so if our house were to burn, then, you know, I'm at setbacks, I would have a two-foot-wide house.
Yeah, that, that question applies even to the existing standard we have in the code that we've discussed that internally, and that's actually something that we need to, we need to have more clarification on that. Did you have anything to add to that? The next section, this also came out of that study, pretty minor. Right now in our code, if you have cross-access easements provided between two properties, you're allowed a 20% reduction in the buffer yard plantings, which is, doesn't really incentivize cross-access connections, so we just want to make that a bigger reduction that you're entitled to if you do that. And we might want to tweak it to say, you also have to close some curb cuts you don't need anymore. If you're going to provide cross-access, we'll give you a bigger reduction in buffer yard plantings, because this would not eliminate the parking landscaping requirements we have, so it wouldn't necessarily get rid of all landscaping between properties, but it would hopefully incentivize more people to provide cross-access.
Yeah, and just to illustrate that, if you have 100 feet of lot, that you share a lot line with somebody, and you install a driveway between those two properties, that driveway is going to be about 20 feet, where you would not be able to plant any buffer yard anyway. So then, in effect, you're getting a 20% reduction, but that doesn't do anything because you're building something there anyway, so it doesn't really do anything. And that's the reasoning behind that, is like, if we're going to make, try to incentivize that, we need an actual, an actual bonus and incentive rather than just a nothing.
And then this next standard about light trespass, this is really deals with, I think, clarifying the standard that we have in the code, because currently, the code is written in our lighting section. The current standard permits you to have light trespass of .1-foot candles at any property line, even like in a commercial area, and that's very, very low. So I think next to residential makes perfect sense. We don't want to change that. If you're next to residential, you need to make sure the lighting is as unobtrusive as possible. When you're in a commercial area, if you look at what other cities do, they allow a higher, they don't allow unlimited light trespass, but in commercial areas, they allow it to be a little bit higher, and that's what we want to do with this section. It would make it a little bit easier to meet the uniformity standards that we have as well. This next section, we have in Section 1143.10, it's titled, it's a real short section of the code about pedestrian connections, where if you have a commercial lot and you butt up to a, the pedestrian network, whether it be sidewalks or the bike network throughout the city, you have to provide a paved connection to that network that leads to your property. The problem, it's very short and it's not very specific, so you could provide like a three-foot-wide asphalt path and, not very substantial, doesn't really tie it in very well to the surrounding network. We want to beef that standard up a little bit to allow us to have a little bit more leeway, like if you're next to the, if you're next to a bike path or a multimodal path like on Wilmington or off of David Road on Hempstead Station there, that the connection can be a little bit more substantial to actually tie it in functionally to the network around you, as opposed to just, yeah, we'll throw in this three-foot connection to meet the minimum standard, but not the intent of the standard. This next section really only deals with off-street parking areas on single and two-unit residential properties. Right now, if you want to have a parking area next to your house, like, or if you want to widen your front driveway, you're required to create a legal parking space next to your house or into the backyard, because right now in the code, you, I think other than the estate pattern district, you can't have parking areas in the front yard. You can have driveways, you can park in your driveways, but that driveway has to connect to a legal parking space in the side yard or the rear yard. The challenge is, for a lot of properties, we also on top of that have a standard that that driveway has, that parking area in the side, in the side yard has to be three feet from the adjoining property line. That same setback requirement doesn't exist in the front yard or the rear yard. And if it's a driveway that connects to a parking area in the backyard, there's no setback requirement at all. It's kind of a, it's a difficult standard to enforce, and it makes us all a lot of properties in the city where there's just, they barely meet the minimum side yard setback. It makes it impossible for them to create a parking area next to their house. So this change would basically eliminate that three-foot setback requirement, and it would also, we also have a screening requirement. If you're, if you create a side yard parking area, you have to screen that parking area with a six-foot evergreen hedge or a six-foot privacy fence. And I don't believe that was in the code before, and we're talking, this proposal would get rid of that standard as well. If your neighbor wants to screen your parking area from them, they can, they can do it on their property, but it wouldn't require the person putting in the parking area to do it. Again, because that standard only applies to the side yard. If you have enough room to put a parking area in your backyard, you can do it just fine up to the property line, no screening. So we were thinking that standard might be a little bit too strict, but I figured there'd be some discussion about that.
I had a, maybe a slightly different question. I'm looking over what you wrote down for the issue, where you say, I don't know if you're referring to the current wording of our zoning code, where it says this means a resident could hypothetically extend a driveway to a parking pad in the rear yard without being required to provide screening or setback. Is that, is that referring to our current code?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And that, that's a scenario where if you, if you're, if you have enough room and you're able to, and you're able to afford to extend the driveway to the rear yard parking area, what's in the side yard where you could still park is considered a driveway and not a parking area.
So what if they decide to put their RV back there, or a boat, or?
Well, those, you're still required to screen those.
Okay.
Those recreational vehicles have different setback. I think it's, I think those would have to be three feet back, and once you hit a certain height, it's six feet back. Those standards wouldn't change, but that's a good question.
Yeah, additionally, for that type of stuff, those things are required to be screened.
Right.
And if they're over a certain height, then they're not allowed to be back there at all. They have to be moved. They have to be moved off-site or be kept indoors. So, but I think, you know, to the, to the greater issue is that you could build a driveway and have it connect to your garage right now, and there's no minimum setback for the driveway from the side lot line in our current code. Same thing, if, same thing, you could take a driveway and take it all the way to your backyard to a garage, and there's no minimum setback for that, because a driveway doesn't have a setback from the side lot line. But the moment that you just stop halfway back and stop in the side yard and make that a parking space, now you have to do a screen plus a setback. And so that, in a sense, you're penalizing the person who just wants to stop in the side yard, but, you know, if somebody has enough money or they have enough land or whatever, they can, they can just drive that car through the giant loophole that we've created by just calling it a driveway.
And they can still park a car there.
Yeah.
But it would be on, parking on that driveway, not a parking spot.
Right.
So that, yeah.
Yeah, so this, this in effect kind of says, we're not treating everybody the same. We, we should, we should make that standard where it's the same for everybody. Makes sense?
Okay.
This next section, this is, this also came out of that non-conformity study. In our parking chapter, when it comes to materials, and this deals more with if you're establishing a new use on a property that's been vac, or if you're changing the use or establishing a new use on a property that's been vacant for a while, that developed a long time ago, there's, it's not uncommon to have parking lots that don't have any curbing along the edge. Our code today, again, in some instances requires you to put full-depth barrier curbing around all of the parking area, which if you're developing a new site, easier to do, um, because you can design your stormwater to handle that fine, you can, it could, you can put it in all at once, but if you're just changing the use on a property that's had a parking lot without curbing for decades, it can become a little trickier to add, especially barrier curbing. You can add at-grade curbing to kind of hold the parking lot together a little better, and it creates a little, it creates an edge, but in a lot of instances, adding curbing, barrier curbing along the edge of all parking areas creates runoff issues, because the site wasn't designed with that in mind, which creates erosion issues, because you have to create openings and water where it used to sheet drain off into a grass area, now is concentrated into a specific area in the back of the parking lot. So, uh, this standard change would basically require, um, it would modify that section for existing properties that don't have curbing to either get rid of the curbing requirement altogether, or allow people to have at-grade concrete, uh, curbing. That, uh, with the main intention of not being overly expensive and also not unintentionally causing stormwater issues, uh, with a code section. Any questions about that? Uh, the, these next two sections are very similar. Our streetscape landscaping and our, uh, requires that, uh, you have one canopy tree planted for every 50 feet of frontage, and if you have like overhead power lines of, to up below a certain height, you're allowed to go down to group A trees planted at a 40 foot, uh, once every 40 feet, or group B trees planted, I believe, once every 30 feet. This amendment would basically allow you to choose between canopy or group A trees, because there's not a lot of canopy trees out there. To be considered a canopy tree needs to be, have a mature height and crown spread of 60 feet, and there's just not a lot of trees that get that big. But there's plenty of group A trees that get, have a minimum mature spread and height of 35 feet, so this would allow them to choose between canopy and group A trees along the frontage, planted at either once every 50 feet for canopy or once every 40 feet for group A. And same with parking lot trees, trees you plant in the parking lot are automatically going to be stunted, like, there's just not a lot of room for them to grow and expand. But our code today requires you to have, uh, one canopy tree for every 3,000 square feet, or two group A trees for every 3,000, for every 3,000 square feet. Again, there's not a lot of canopy trees out there, and one, and two group A trees for every 3,000 square feet of parking lot area is quite a bit. So, uh, this amendment would just allow you to choose either or, one canopy or one group A tree for every 3,000 square feet of parking lot area. And this would also double by getting, uh, hopefully getting more tree varieties in the city, so if the Emerald, uh, an Emerald Ash Bore equivalent ripped through the area in the future, it's more, more likely to have a wider variety of trees in the city that can, uh, weather a storm like that in the future. Any questions about that? All right. Uh, this next section is fairly minor. Around the time I first started, we had gotten a couple of questions about driveway gates, mainly in, on bigger lots in the city where there's a huge set, front yard setback, and there's a big winding driveway, could they have a gate in the driveway? The answer is yes, we view it as a fence. The next question is, what's the maximum height? And the answer is four feet tall, uh, for a driveway gate. So this section, we do have some area, uh, sections of our code where we allow fences to be taller than the max, uh, the maximum requirements. We would like to add a section for driveway gates that meet certain requirements in terms of setback from the edge of the road. We want it to be far enough back from the street that cars can comfortably pull up, um, without blocking the right of way. They have to be designed a certain way. We don't want, uh, chain-link driveway gates, but if you have like a wrought iron type gate with brick columns on either side, you should probably be able to have a gate that gets a little taller than four feet. So we'd like to create a, uh, exception for driveway gates, um, subject, subject to certain standards to allow them to be taller than, uh, four feet. This next section is also, uh, we need to do more research on this. We have in our zoning code, and this was in our environmental, uh, requirements manual under, in our old zoning code for wall construction, and it, the language is a little bit confusing, uh, because the way it's written, uh, if you have a wall, it's required to have a, a foundation and footer at least 30 inches below grade, but the frost line is 32 inches below grade, so we know we want to increase that at a minimum to 32 inches below grade. The other thing it's a little confusing about is it's not clear how it deals with just retaining walls, because there's a lot of retaining walls that are gravity walls, they're designed without necessarily a 32 inch or 30 inch footer in mind. They're just like ready rock and things like that. Where our code doesn't really address them very well, but, um, so we want to create, we want to modify this section to address those type of wa, types of walls a little bit better, and we'll have to work with our, uh, building officials and building inspectors to kind of craft that language to make sure that if a wall is not automat, if a wall's not already subject to the building code, what zoning standards do we want them to be subject to? And that's what this, uh, code amendment would do. I don't see any hands raised, so.
I mean, so would there be like a, a subset for segmental retaining walls then, separate from something where you're, you're digging a foundation? I mean, what you're talking about in terms of, you know, the ready rock or the, I mean, it's basically called a segmental?
I think what we, I think we, a lot of those retaining walls are already subject to the building code, once they hit a certain height. So I think with this, my, my idea of the, in this section, what I'm picturing is, if a, if a wall is not subject to the building code, what standards do we want them to meet? But if so, so if there's a ready rock wall that isn't, uh, tall enough to trigger building code review requirements, or it's not in an area that triggers building code requirements, what will, what will we, would we be okay with viewing? And, uh, it'd probably be like manufacturer specs and things like that to make sure that, but I don't think it'd really carve out a new section for retaining walls, it'd probably all be within the same section. There'd just be a retain, retaining wall category within that section.
Ryan, could you describe for me the difference between retaining walls and gravity walls?
Well, uh, gra, a gravity wall can be a retaining wall, it's just a gravity wall is just my, correct me if I'm wrong, my, my understanding of a gravity wall is just, it's, it's a way that the materials are designed to not necessarily have like a full-depth footer. You basically stack up something heavy and you hold it together with other, other materials that allows it to hold the earth behind it. They're designed in a way that, uh, doesn't necessarily need a footer, like a full-depth footer. Usually there's a little bit below grade to stabilize it, but there's a lot of different ways to hold those walls together. And probably the most common example you'll see is like the garden blocks that have the little lip on the backside of them, where they kind of stack up and angle back like this. Most of those are, I've never seen any of those have a footer. There's some of them that's below grade and there's like gra, and it's usually compressed with gravel, but there's usually not a footer. They're designed in a way that allows the mani, the manufacturers design them in a way to allow them to hold back a certain amount of earth without needing that. And that's what this section would try to create a clear, clear guidance for us to follow when those type of applications come in. But that's what, I mean, that's my understanding of a gravity.
I never heard the term used before, that's why I was asking.
Oh, okay, yeah, I can, the next amendment will be a little more detailed. Uh, th, this next section is very minor, um, and it goes along well with the following section. In our section about the requirements for screening service and loading areas, it says the, uh, you can have a fence or a wall up to a maximum of six feet in height, which for the most part works pretty well, with some loading dock, some loading docks need taller fences to screen them well. So this section would basically allow the zoning administrator or the planning and development department when we're reviewing stuff to allow that screening wall for loading docks to be a little bit taller than six feet. Our old code did allow that, and I think there was an issue with an old development off of Wil, was it the old?
Elder, Elder, Kroger, uh, at Four and Smithville.
I believe that, was that a really tall masonry wall that was approved back there that ended up, I don't know if it caused issues, but it probably didn't meet the intent of some of the standards we had back then. And then going along with that, our, uh, one flexible standard that was added a while ago is the substitution of standard section in our landscaping code that allows us to, I don't, if there's certain unique aspects of the property, to approve, the way it's written today, we're able to approve waivers to the landscaping standards, not, if you read the whole section, the intent is for us to be able to approve substitutions that meet the intent of the standard, not to just waive standards altogether. So this amendment would really just basically swap the word waiver for substitution. It'd be the same, it'd work the exact same way that it does today. And then the last few sections are, uh, non-conforming sites, and this is one that I think would generate a little bit of discussion, also when we did that non-conformity study, uh, last year. We found some sites that had developed a, many decades ago, where the parking spaces are too small and the drive aisles are a little bit too small, and they functioned fine for decades. And it'd be unfortunate to have a site that otherwise is perfectly conforming and fine to be redeveloped and reused, but they just can't make the, today's minimum parking space requirements meet the, they can't, the site's not big enough to accommodate them. So the, this section would basically create an exception if you have a non-conforming parking lot regarding space, uh, parking space and drive aisle sizes, where there's insufficient space present to increase the size of the parking spaces and drive aisles, and where the requirements associated with emergency access are met. It would allow us to approve new uses on those properties, even if they don't meet the minimum standards today. Again, the biggest thing is circulation, uh, for the fire code and emergency vehicles, but if it meets everything else, it's probably worth allowing those properties to be reused.
I, I see your comments there that it would not grant waivers to the interior parking lot landscaping, but I'm assuming if it's got too small parking spaces and too small drive aisles, there probably is no si, or buffer yards as well. So are we then assuming that we, we will just have to waive the requirement for side yard buffer yards, I mean, or?
I think if it's between like uses, like if it's too commercial, like on Wilmington, I think we've, we've, I don't know, I, I, that's a pretty standard thing. I think we have to be a little open to modifying the standard, because there's just not enough room, but I think if it's next to residential, I wouldn't really want to waive the buffer requirement, but that section, that caveat down there was based on an, an internal discussion. I think interior parking lot landscaping, you'd still have room to carve out islands and peninsulas and things like that, even if they're a little bit smaller. But I think if it's a buffer yard between like uses, yeah, we'd have to be willing to allow a waiver of that, or a modification of that standard.
Just in my mind, when I'm looking at some of those really old properties, I mean, you basically paved up to your property line and with, yeah.
And I think in those instances, instances, like we talked, I remember a comment that came out of the last meeting that we had was, well, why not just take those buffer yard plantings and push just more stuff to the front, like where it's visible, more visible from the street, and that's kind of what we've been open to doing internally since that meeting. And then, uh, a couple definitions that we don't have in our code today, but are referenced throughout our code. We, we want to create a definition for attached. We, uh, reference attached structures quite a bit, but we don't have a clear definition for what that means. And this is really meant to avoid a situation where, um, someone has a garage that's detached, they want to build another garage where the property's not big enough to support one, and then they want, we, one loo, it's not really a loophole, but they can attach their garage to their house, and suddenly they have an allowance for another detached accessory structure. Want to avoid a situation where someone takes a piece of plywood and bolts it to the walls and it's attached. We kind of just need clear standards for what we mean by attached. Um, and defining that defin, defining that term is the, is a good way to do that. Um, awnings, they're referenced in our projections chapter, but there's not a definition for them, and similar to canopies, because those are different items, but a lot of people use the terms interchangeably. We just wanted to find them a little bit more clearly in our code. And that's actually all that we had tonight, um, in terms of that. The next step, based on the comments that we have tonight, we'll just, we'll actually start drafting the language, um, of these event, of these potential amendments and bring, have a more detailed study session later.
All right, any, uh, final questions from the commission?
No.
Nice work. Yep. Thank you much. All right, uh, moving on in our agenda to item number four, this is audience participation. Four items not on the agenda, so if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the commission, now would be that time. Seeing none, other business, signing of Platts.
Uh, we do not have any Platts to sign this evening.
Communications and reports.
Uh, nothing further.
Planning commission comments.
No comment.
Mr. Waskey.
I have one, uh, tomorrow, uh, well, I don't think anyone's watching us live today, is that right? This is not live, so this is gonna be passe, but tomorrow is election day, Tuesday, November 8th, so if you haven't voted already, please go out and vote. Uh, if you have voted, thank you. There's many issues on the ballot, even though it's an off-year or midterm election, I shouldn't say off-year, but it's a midterm election, and we have many important seats, uh, on the ballot, and including governor, lieutenant governor, US senate, US congress, state house, um, county, many state offices. Positions are up for election, um, county and state supreme court and many judgeships. There's two constitutional amendments for the state on the ballot, plus, uh, a couple of, uh, levies, so be sure to go out and vote, and that's all I had.
Mr. Rethman.
No comments.
I do not have any comments myself, so, uh, this meeting then will, will be adjourned at 7:48 until our next regularly scheduled meeting.